Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Good luck.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the dog. Good morning.
Can we start, Elizabeth?
Yes, you may.
Don't embarrass her. We're not on over here. We have the news going on.
We're waiting. Thank you. Okay. Good morning, and welcome to the January 24th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I'll give you a thought first, then I get to play with the dog this morning, but I'll tell ya, that dog has more energy. I'm not sure I want to see him. This is a quote from the end of Daniel Webster's Eulogy of Washington. He said, "Remember that government of the people will be government for the people as long as there is government by the people." So serious today. We're starting off serious. We'll end up with a little humor. Oh my. There's my mom.
Who is this?
I'm not going with her. This week's featured pet at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel is a male retriever mix picked up on West Erie Avenue in Lorraine. You're on TV. He's in cage number 14. We're not going for a walk. We have things to do. Can you sit? Sit. He's eligible for adoption on Saturday, January 26th. The dog warden tells us that this dog was taken to the WEE Care Day Show, WEE being W-E-E, meaning small, to show the children how to care for a dog, and they named him Ollie Bones. Now look how beautiful he's sitting. Okay? You looking for a pet? He'd like to come and play at your house. Come out to see all the animals we have at the dog kennel. They're looking for a home.
Madam Clerk? Job and family bills?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
There are no advances for today. Requisitions?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a number of personnel issues to discuss, specifically some new hires at Job and Family Services, County Nursing Home. I also have a number of labor relations issues to discuss, have a fact mining report, and a couple of labor contracts that have been concluded, potential purchase of real estate. And I think that that may cover the issues that are allowable under the Sunshine Law. I'm gonna look through my folder. If I have any additional, I'll modify them into my business. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an 11 o'clock Investment Advisory Committee meeting, and we also have a luncheon, so if we don't get done this morning, we may have to continue into the afternoon.
Oh, heaven forbid.
For you or for us?
For both of us, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. Approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for December 20th, 2007, and January 14th, 2008.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Amend annual appropriation for Fund 6,000, bond retirement, from $3,171,500 to $3,100,000, which is a difference of $71,500.
Do we have questions for Lisa, or do we want her to expand upon this?
Sure.
This is, well, this is more just a housekeeping measure.
Okay. You wanna start then?
Well, it's just, yeah, we were slightly overappropriated, so we have to do a little bit of housekeeping. As we closed out the year and finished up on numbers, we were slightly overappropriated. So we're just bringing the books into balance. Very simple housekeeping procedure.
In other words, we didn't have enough money to appropriate that much.
Correct.
Thank you. Also moved.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Addendum 1 to the agreement and stop loss contract with Medical Mutual, effective January 1 of 2008 through December 31 of 2008.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is just an extension of our contract that we negotiated a few years ago. As you know, we've been very, very successful in holding down healthcare rates the last two years. I'm very proud of our work in that area. Hopefully, we'll have another good year. We're working on our dental and our prescription drug programs and vision programs, and hope to bring some additional cost savings this year, since I think we've kinda run rung the rag as much as we can on the medical side of the house. But this is part of the two-year, a three-year contract that we negotiated last year. It's just each year we do an extension on the stop loss and the specific and accurate thresholds.
So what is the actual addendum? Just adding another year to the contract?
Correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Also moved. Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Award contract to Expediax for the copy paper, envelopes, and various paper products for Lorraine County Administration Building Office Services and Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, effective to December 31 of 2008.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Question, Yvonne. Did we have many local bidders on this at all?
No. We also put it out there online, and we got nobody's help. What's cutting is that we had too many specialty items, and so we didn't get anyone. We put it out there for like three weeks.
Really?
Yeah. Let me grab an opportunity to say that we did try the reverse bidding online. I was a little disappointed that we weren't able to achieve some success, but I want everybody to know that we are trying to use new techniques to ratchet down some costs for the county. We had discussed this back in October publicly here, so I think it's important that we report that we did carry through with our plans to see if reverse bidding on the internet would lower some of our costs. I'm not, I'm not completely wanting to abandon trying to use reverse auctioning. Didn't work this time, but there's other issues that it may work well with, so I wanna revisit that issue. But timing being such, we did have it out there for quite a while. I think there was a little bit of a protest locally by some of the vendors not to wanna use the reverse bidding. While reverse bidding will save us, could potentially save us some money, it makes it more difficult for locals to compete on a larger basis.
I know you told me that we didn't have any bids on. That's why I thought I'd just want for regular bidding, if we had any locals who bid on the paper products here.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we've received a local bid on paper for a couple of years, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But we'll continue to look for opportunities to try to use the internet and the reverse bidding, and see if we can be successful through the course of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize salary adjustments for various personnel at Lorraine Municipal Courts, reflecting the county's 2-5 share, effective January 1, 2008. Magistrate Daniel Chris Cook, biweekly rate of $985.83, and Bailiff Thomas Worldz, biweekly rate of $738.25. Amending Resolution Number 0721, January 14th, 2008, which was $713.20.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, advertise RFPs in Chronicle Telegram on January 25th for Lorraine County Community Development, block grant programs for the CDBG FY07 and the CHIP FY08, and submit by 4:00 PM on February 4th.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Advertise notice in Morning Journal, Non-Legal Section, to fulfill the requirement for environmental review record, or it should read FY07, CDBG Formula Grant.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, amend Resolution Number 07864, adopted November 29th, 2007, determining to proceed with construction of Northeast Columbia Township Sanitary Sewer Improvement, Number 115, within Lorraine County General Sewer District. Said amendment is to reflect the sewer number that should be Number 119, not Number 115, which is already assigned to Crest Haven West Wastewater Treatment Plant.
And that's all this is doing, is clarifying the number of the district. Also moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize various release of retainage for Crest Haven Wastewater Treatment Plant. The engineer has approved payment, and all work is completed, and paperwork has been received. Babe Mechanical and Electrical Corporation in Lorraine for the amount of $1,644 plus interest, and Kelston Incorporated in Shelby in the amount of $18,320.60 plus interest.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Approve, under transit?
Excuse me, Janice. Who can't you hear?
Janice, she's low.
Janice, pull your microphone a little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tony's hanging on every word, and she's not hearing it too well.
Okay. Is that better? Can you hear it, Tony?
You're awful quiet, Janice.
Yeah, you're a nice soft-spoken.
Well, sorry. Maybe I don't talk as loud as Teresa. Can you hear me now?
Thank you, Tony.
Okay. Under transit, approve and enter into a contract with Oberlin College for the OPS program, effective January 1, 2008, through December 31 of 2008, at a cost of $42,025, with a 60-day cancellation clause. This is subject to acceptance by Oberlin College and legal review by the prosecutor's office.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Declare 10 vehicles to be surplus from LCT that has been stored at the airport, and instruct that these vehicles be placed for sale on govdeals.com website on January 25 of 2008.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services to utilize the agency's Visa card for the year 2008, not to exceed $2,500, and $10,000 to $20,000 in Shell Oil Gas Card, not to exceed $200. Expenditures are work-related to conferences, food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Common Police Court, create Fund Number 3630, which is a foreclosure special project fund. This will be funded by an additional fee of $275, paid upon filing of a complaint in foreclosure, effective retroactive to January 2nd of 2008.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion?
Yes. This is one step forward in helping to alleviate part of our problems with foreclosures in this area. Currently, the filing fee is 225. We're raising it another 275, which means it'll be $500 filing fee, which the banks will pay when they want to file for foreclosure. This would generate, if we have 2,500 filings, would generate about $687,000, and all this money is gonna be strictly used for foreclosure interventions. That money will be separated between the courts, the clerk of courts, and the sheriff's office. So this, hopefully, we'll be able to save some homes out there that currently are falling through the cracks. And I see Tim Looby's here. Did you wanna comment on this at all?
I'm welcome to, I'm here to answer any questions the Commissioners may have. We're still developing as to how those funds will ultimately be utilized.
Tim, you wanna do it up here, so the public can hear you, please? Thank you.
That fund was created in conjunction with requests from the sheriff's office, the clerk's office, as well as the court. Ultimately, we're not sure today how those funds will be utilized. We're anticipating most of them will be utilized in personnel to vastly improve how those cases are processed, as well as ensuring that all those cases get the due diligence that is necessary, and then ultimately, and hopefully, an increased number of cases provide some mediation.
Will we have like a specialized magistrate that deals with foreclosures, that will look at each and every one of these in detail to make sure that, you know, everything's, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted?
Indeed. I think that's one of the things that the court's considering right now, how best to staff that position, whether it be a combination of administrative individuals who are going to review the documents and make sure they're appropriate, as well as a magistrate to conduct mediations in those cases.
I'm glad this finally came, came up, because I've been in discussions with certain individuals regarding this increase in fee, and I'm glad to see it's finally happening.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
This was recommendation of that committee that you are a part of, Lori? No, not exactly. It's not part of the foreclosure task force, but...
Part and partial.
Part and partial, okay.
One of the many things that hopefully will ultimately improve the status in Lorraine County, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, too.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Engineer, authorize release of retainage in amount of $14,427.38 plus interest to Lidle Construction.
Pull it towards you a little bit more. They're still saying they can't hear. So soft-spoken.
Boy, I'm sorry. I thought I was louder than that. Okay. I'm gonna start over. Authorize release of retainage in the amount of $14,427.38 plus interest to Lidle Construction Incorporated in Worcester for work performed on the 2007 CHIP and SEAL program. The engineer has approved payment, and all work is completed, and paperwork has been received.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize 25% freeze thaw load limit on various township roads in Carlisle Township, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 5577.07, effective February 1, 2008 through May 1, 2008.
So moved.
Second? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Authorize the engineer to proceed with the application process to increase federal funds and use of the Credit Bridge Program funds for the local share and rehabilitation of the Dean Road Bridge, as proposed in Richland Engineer's Study. If both funding sources are approved, the local share would be $106,150, plus design split 50/50 with Erie County, and would come up with MVGT funds. If Erie County still wishes to close the bridge, then a joint board meeting will be scheduled.
Also moved.
Second? Mr. Carney? I think Ms. Blair's looking for you.
Do you want to, yeah, I know you're in the back. Do you wanna talk? Give us a little brief explanation. I know that your office has spent a lot of time working on this. I know Mr. Twining attended meetings to represent us on this issue. Morning.
Yes, there has been numerous meetings, and Mr. Twining has represented the Commissioners in those also. We've had meetings in Erie, and we've had meetings at my, my office. We're searching, we're actually requesting a process to increase federal funds, and the purpose for this resolution would be to permit that. The federal funds were approved through the County Engineers Association of Ohio, and we're looking to increase those. When we programmed this through ODOT, they questioned the strength of the guard rail. We, in conjunction with Erie's County's engineer, we had Richland Engineering do a preliminary engineering study to answer those specific questions ODOT was referring to, and the subsequent reports showed that the bridge railing would be required to be designed, and the approach rail must be improved. And the report also showed the following additional work required, which encompassed the forward approach retaining wall, structural steel repairs, new bearings, substructure repairs, and miscellaneous expenses to encompass all those activities. Total cost for the rehab, including the above items, estimated to be $9,650,000. What we intend to do is require, is apply for the federal funds through the CAO program, which we already have, but we're going to increase that. We also have the availability of, for the match, which would be 20%, to be split 50/50 between Erie County and myself, and through the engineer's motor vehicle gas tax funds. And we have an additional benefit of obtaining reserved bridge funds at 50% cost. That would mean the total expenditure would be $106,000, shared between Lorraine and Erie. So we're looking at over a million dollars worth of work for $50,000 of local cost. So that's what we're doing today, permitting my office to apply for additional federal funds, with the extra incentive that we can obtain other bridge funds that was not used by another county, and we can obtain those for 50%.
Can I have a question? If Erie County doesn't wanna participate, is it the engineers positioned to close the bridge, or is it the Erie County Commissioners who make that decision to close the bridge? Who's it fall on?
It would, it would be a combination of the two recommendations from the Erie County Bridge and official action by Ohio, by the Erie County Commissioners.
Okay. So we can still negotiate with Erie County Commissioners, nothing goes forward without them approving a resolution to close that bridge, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Or just checking, the engineer doesn't have final say on it?
In my, no, the engineer does not have final say. It's up to county commissioners in both counties.
Well, I know he's been recommending to close the bridge. The engineer in Erie County hasn't wanted to do anything with it, so, I mean, the press has called on stuff, and I haven't had much discussion with Erie County Commissioners as of yet, so...
Yes, he has, and I totally disagree with that.
Correct.
And we've also received several letters from townships in Lorraine County in support of keeping this open. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Yes, as a matter of fact, that was 236 letters, if I recall.
Okay. More than us, then.
But nobody's counting.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Lori, did you have any questions?
No. Any more discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter into a contract with K.E. McCartney and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $503,232 to provide engineering services for Tower Boulevard from Fable Avenue to Illyria Avenue, City of Lorraine. K.E. was selected using the county's consultant selection projects, and $200,000 will be expended in 2008, with balance required in 2009 from the account number Professional Services.
Also moved. Second? And Ken, would you like to brief us on this, please?
Should've read the agenda closer. Could've stayed here. And this is the, a very important project in the city of Lorraine. It's the first one we're going to do under your bond program we created together. This, our forecast for this is 80% federal funds, 20% local match, and we expect the 20% local match to be paid through the Ohio Public Works Commission. Again, 80, 20 equals 100. It's a little more difficult because it's going through vacant land. There may be some additional environmentals, but there hasn't been any activity, and then there's a very, I think there's zero wetlands in this regard because of the fact that it's been there such a long time, and actually, it's been basically reserved for the extension years ago. We revitalized that tip through the TAC, as we all are members, and we look forward to working with this. It's 100%. The bond program is in fact that number 503, but I've proposed to spend 200 in one year and then attach the other bond characteristics to the remainder of that, which would be in a neighborhood of $300,000. The total cost of the construction would be in a neighborhood of 3.5, 3.6 million. Four lanes, concrete, just as if the Tower Boulevard you're familiar with, with the towers in the middle. But it'll be four lanes instead of the original two that was done before. This will complete that to Illyria Avenue. And there is a Phase 3 that we've seen through, through Nowaka. It hasn't been prioritized yet. It's not a strong push in that regard, but ultimately, years to come, the Phase 3 would be from Illyria Avenue to State Route 57, and there'd be a four-lane connection between State Route 58 and Route 57.
Wonderful. I used to live on Tower Boulevard when I was in elementary school, and they talked about this connection back then. talked about this connection back then. I remember my parents talking about it running all the way to 57.
And you remember when it was built?
Thirty-five years later and now it's starting to go forward.
Sometimes it takes that long. Where is the 3.6, 3.6 million supposed to come from?
Well, that's 80% federal funds and 20%, Ohio Public Works.
Federal funds through Nowaka?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Now the 500,000 has to be paid upfront by, is it motor vehicle gas tax and then you get it back?
We'll be using the bond program for that.
The five million dollar bond. This is the first program going forward. Then they'll pay it back.
We will.
And a ten-year program after construction's done.
Exactly. Ten years after the first payment is made to the consultant, the responsibility of the city is to pay us back. However, I'm looking in the future so that we could mix that in some regards to the eighty, twenty, and we hope to get the whole thing 100%, including the engineering.
Wonderful.
I think that this Tower Boulevard was one of the issues that we tried to put on the track several years ago. And it's been five or six years and it was not accepted. So this is another way to finally get it where it needs to be. So it's certainly taken a long time.
Well, I'm glad to.
But anyway.
Commissioner Kayla, I'm glad to see you're familiar with it. I myself am a little familiar. When I was in my second year of college, I inspected the first stage of that through the Almadine Village that Tony Morello built. So, and the developers are still alive for some reason, and the contractor, as we see Ed Smidick ever so often.
Ed Smidick was the contractor on this?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, cable-operated backhoe. Hydraulics went around.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Sheriff, rescind resolution number 08-31, adopted January 14th, 2008. Receiving and filing Lorain County Sheriff's Annual Report in accordance with ORC 325.31 for all unpaid fees for more than one year prior to January 1 of 2008 in the amount of one million, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. This is due to the unpaid fees from juvenile court were not approved by January 14th and that figure had that amount deducted.
And this was necessary to reflect the correct amount. So I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
And Sheriff, do you want to come and tell us? You sent us lots of information and you did some research on this issue. I think that we need to publicly define that.
For giving a million dollars?
Pardon me?
You want to define forgiving a million dollars?
Oh, forgiving. I thought you said not forgiving, but for giving. And I thought, who are we giving a million dollars to?
Morning Commissioners and everybody.
Uh, is.
I'm sorry.
Is either way okay, Jim? Either microphone okay?
Yeah, I see the ones fine, Commissioner. Thank you.
Per your request, we did meet with the Clerk of Courts, Ron Abikowski, also with his Chief Deputy Sally Pack and also a couple of the workers there, Kenny Burkhart and Sally Cornwell were there also. I did a little research on that prosecutor's opinion that Sheriff Mahoney had requested in '96, which I believe I sent you a copy of.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
And I believe Prosecutor Ennis wrote that opinion.
He's been around for a while.
And I think it was suggested in there that there was ways of possibly forgiving those juvenile fees in there. But I guess there's a couple of ways we can do this report. I mean, we could not forgive those fees and carry them on the books. And I'm gonna let Kenny Burkhart talk a little bit further because they still are actively pursuing these fees. Sally Cornwell, I know there's people in prison. Sometimes it takes a couple of years for this money to come in, but they are actively going after some of that money.
Whether or not we forgive them?
Yeah, yes. It's still, if you forgive them, I think it's still on the books and I believe they're still researching it. Is that correct?
Clerk's office, their portion doesn't involve juvenile. Juvenile, if it was there, it's probably not there.
Okay, the juvenile fees are a separate part of it. And when I talked to Doug Messer last week too, that we had talked about. I'm gonna let Lieutenant Davis fill in because he handles this day-to-day, so I'll let him speak a little bit.
Thank you Sheriff. Good morning.
Okay, do you have a specific question?
No, I think that you were just gonna try to educate us.
All right. The process is where, you know, we can't charge ahead of time for any fees, okay? Everything that's issued by a proper and lawful authority, we have to go ahead and process and attempt service on, make our return, return it to the clerk's office and then they do all the billing. Once they get paid and they forward the money to us and then we apply it toward whatever they're. In the past, they've always just, you know, forgive the juvenile fees, but really they're still on the books and any money that we get, we actually still apply toward those fees. Even under like the former Sheriff Mahoney, if we get paid any money, all the money's still in account. It's just not reported under his oath of office. Because it's just for his fees under his tenure that we're actually reporting on. But any money that we do get in is applied toward the balance.
I guess the question I thought was, should we or should we not forgive these fees? And I thought if we forgave them, that meant that you wouldn't be seeking to collect.
I think it's for reporting purposes. I mean, that's my understanding. It's basically for reporting purposes, you know, to sit there and it looks like a large amount, you know, when you look back over the years, you know, and it's just for that there. And actually, I think just to probably eliminate the confusion is, because I had some discussion with the Sheriff, is we'll just include it in the reports from now on. Because really, this was happening probably 12 years ago when they started this. And, you know, what we can do now is we can just include it in there and we'll just keep it on there for an inclusion of all the fees then.
Well, question.
I think that'll help clear up some of the confusion on this.
Even though we forgive it or waive it off of the books, is it still a collectible debt, except for the juvenile?
Yes.
Okay, so it's still collectible. Just a matter of cleaning up Sheriff Stomity's paperwork at the end of the year. You get rid of that number even though it's sitting as a collectible?
Could you repeat the question, please?
If we forgive it, the million dollars, and now the juvenile you can't collect?
Well, you don't, you don't forgive the million dollars.
Okay.
That's, the only thing that you're looking at is the juvenile fee.
Just the sixty-four thousand, right, but we're not gonna touch.
My understanding, it's just for the reporting purposes where it's not included in, you know, the final report.
In the common plea.
But we still get money and we apply it toward the balances.
Okay.
Basically, I mean, that's the whole gist of it. It's a reporting premise on 325.31 where he reports any unpaid fees, you know, but any money that we get from the clerk's office, juvenile, probate, domestic, it's still applied. Even if it's two, three, four, five years down the road, we've gotten fees from 1992, you know, from records then.
I think it was Commissioner Blair's question. We're not getting rid of the debt.
No.
We're just doing it for cleanup purposes and you can't collect the juvenile.
Right.
The debt actually is bigger than this million dollars that you're looking at. Mahoney's, prior to him, had an amount of money that they still are collecting on, but it's not shown anymore. And back in '65, Sheriff Vernon Smith asked for a prosecutor's opinion when this law took effect, and they said, "The sheriff only reports for his term of office, not for the prior sheriffs."
Did Jerry write that one too in 1965?
No, Jerry did not write that one.
Actually, I didn't write any of them. The AG did most.
But as he says, there's still fees being collected through the clerk's office for Sheriff Mahoney and I'm not sure if they're still collecting for Vernon Smith or Tim Burks, but, and maybe Ken wants to speak a little bit on how they're collecting.
Good morning, Ken.
Good morning. The, back in 2003, Ron Abikowski Clerk of Court set up the collection division, which armed with House Bill 464. And that allowed us to go after this indebtedness by the, its fees and court costs that we went out and collected. And I think over the course of the years, initially it was the department, just myself, Sally was added back in 2005, Sally Cornwell. And right now, I think we've added over the years, an addition of over a million dollars and Mr. Cordez can probably verify that, but right now, we're not as active in the collection because of manpower. Sally Cornwell's been doing it by herself pretty much and she's been over in the Civil Department working on foreclosures. So, I mean, it's, it's, we're not actively in it. What we're, our intention is once we have the, our system, our new system set up, we'll send what we have and collected out to a collection agency. House Bill 464 allows us to send it out. There's a fee that is charged in addition to the fees already owed. So when we get to that, what we will do is we'll issue a certificate of judgment. That's the intent, to issue a certificate of judgment on these courts, turn them over to the, to a collection agency and have the collection agency handle. So that way we won't have to add additional manpower.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any further questions?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jerry?
I could try and clarify a little bit more and hopefully not confuse it more. There are actually three categories and then what Ken is talking about is adult court costs. And as he indicated, I think it was the beginning of last year when this came up, we spent a considerable period of time working on this and for a couple of years, we have implemented a process of reducing this to judgment and proceeding to collect some of it. But as Ken indicated and as I think as we've heard over and over with all the foreclosure things and happening, you know, the clerk staff has to have a priority as to what they can do and that was a lower priority. On the juvenile area, there's actually two different categories. And I think I got your opinion from the AG that says things like cost for service of process and that sort of thing are not chargeable to the juveniles as court costs. There's a very small part of it that technically is. But by the time you try going back through those costs and separating that small part out, you have, again, defeated the purpose of what you're doing. So, and that's what he's talking about. That's, that's really what's being. So if they do get paid, they can apply those, but those technically don't get charged and are something that we can go after and collect. And that's what he's putting on his books as being forgiven.
Yeah, what, what we collect is the domestic, civil and criminal. And the bulk of the money is in criminal, which is the hardest to collect.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
Thank you, Ken. Thank you Sheriff. Thank you Lieutenant.
Thank you for your time and your explanations. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Receive, file and forgive the unpaid fees from juvenile court by Lorain County Sheriff's Office for the year 2007 in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred, thirty-six dollars and eighty cents.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Receive and file Lorain County Sheriff's Annual Report in accordance with ORC 325.31 for all unpaid fees for more than one year prior to January 1 of 2008 in the amount of one million, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
We should stop there, Janice. Also move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Now, we'll have this discussion again next year and you can educate us again next year. Thank you.
Mr. Cordez?
Just as an update to my request for an executive session, I also have a matter pending. Well, I wouldn't call it pending. I would call it ongoing, wouldn't you Jerry? Ongoing litigation that I'll be briefing the board on also. Other than that, I don't have any additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Kokowski?
Yeah, last week, Betty and I attended Team Lorain County meeting, which was held at the college. And the intent of that meeting was to prove upon how we handle new job leads from Team NEO. And although we did extremely well when we worked with TeleTech, we are aspiring to do even better when another league comes in the future. It was interesting to learn that Team NEO had a meeting that morning and they announced their job number, our number of jobs that they created in northeast Ohio in 2007 and that number was 1,500. And I'm proud to say that of that, a thousand of those jobs were here in Lorain County. Lorain County is definitely doing the right things when it comes to attracting new businesses and we have the partnerships in place to spur economic development. We want to be the community of choice when a business is looking to relocate. This county is going to continue to be proactive rather than reactive when it comes to job growth. And on a lighter side, my sister frequently watches our meetings on Monday nights. So her birthday is Monday. So Jo Lynn, if you're watching, I want to just say happy birthday to you.
Is she gonna be 40 for the third time?
Yeah, she's sticking at 40 also.
Thanks, Betty.
I would never bring that up, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Kayla?
You're kind. That's the end of my report.
Busy week. I spent Saturday afternoon at Lorain City Hall with the Directions 2008, a forum of elected officials and the school superintendent. Comments about how they're gonna change around the city with the new administration and working cooperatively with their schools. It was quite informative. Sunday and Monday was Martin Luther King Weekend. It was very cold walking from the Palace Civic Center to City Hall. I felt it was in Chicago Sunday night. They did a great program. Tim Williams actually had me present a couple of acknowledgements to the Lorain County United Ministries and to the anti-hate group. It was a very nice, great turnout on Monday. Then the great walk from City Hall in Allee to the Allee High School, again, quite cold. Did have a nice evening though, after eating some great food at Marcel Hall, Soul Food Buffet. But then I got to see our own David Ashenhurst doing poetry in the John Price Story at Peace Church in Oberlin on Monday night. So, thank you. It was quite entertaining. Sorry the guy cut you off though, David. Also, I had a nice dog story Tuesday morning. I go into the store. It's about quarter to seven in the morning and gentleman for the city of Lorain cleans downtown. Well, there's this little terrier out front freezing. He wraps into town. I come out to the door. So he took care of a dog for a couple hours. And then Mike Mate, the dog catcher, picked him up and took him to Dock Woods. And so far, so good. I heard by what General said the dog's fine. So, nice little take care of a dog story. So, that's the end of my report. Commissioner?
Thank you. To piggyback on what Lori said, Team Lorain County is meeting a week from tomorrow, which is Friday. And the meeting will be February 1st. They're welcoming Groundhog Day. And Lee Fisher, Department of Development Chief Executive's going to be the speaker at the Team Lorain County meeting. It's going to be in Oberlin. So you can start your day with Team Lorain County in the morning and then in the afternoon, you can come at 12:30 for the Lorain County Community Alliance meeting. And I'm, I'm, I'm ahead of the game, David. I'm announcing it now. We're going to start at 12:30 with a little lunch and then we're going to have a program from NEOSA, which is the Northeast Ohio Sourcing Office. And that's gonna be followed by a report from Sheffield Lake Mayor John Piscura on Local Government Services Collaboration Grant Program. So.
So what's for dinner?
Sloppy Joes. You gotta come and find out. We'll have cookies too. The Lorain County Visitors Bureau Board Meeting was this past week and we have 17 board members. Two are completing, I think, about 26 years of service and have chosen not to be reappointed. That's Len DeLuca. I think probably that was the original board. And Cuddy Katanzarit. And I thought I, Craig Umlin from the Soccer Academy is going to be one of the new board members. I thought you'd like to hear that. And the Lorain County Solid Waste Management District also had their first monthly meeting this past week. And since the two of you took turns being on the advisory board this past two years, it's my turn to serve. And I was very, very impressed. When they asked the district coordinator to give his report, he demurred to his staff and each of them gave a little description of what they do and what their job description is and what they actually do. And it was, you know, I've, I've been here for a while and I pretty much know a lot of what the Solid Waste District does, but it was very interesting to hear them define what they do as part of their duties. So I was very impressed by the whole department. And so I'm looking forward to serving on that board this year, so.
That's because the plan's done.
Yeah.
But I have been on the board when we were working on the plan, okay? I was going through some old paperwork at home and five years ago, I think it was my turn on the board when we did that. So I've been there, done that. And thank you for all your hard work on the plan.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. This is what you call teamwork. Madam Clerk?
There's no clerk's report for today. Board correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
David, our Oberlin Council representative?
He got cut off the other night doing the John Price. I think he wants to finish his script.
Good morning Commissioners. Actually, I was doing the Martin Luther King part and my colleague up there was doing the John Price part.
That's right.
And we both got cut off about halfway through it by the poet who was anxious to go and just said, "I'm starting," and we just had to stand. Nice to see you down there, sir. And as I said last week, we've got a lot going on this year in Oberlin and hope to see you all down there frequently. I just wanted to ask on Board Correspondence, item 21, concerning the Lorain County Domestic Relations Court Appointed Counsel. I see that there is a rate request, rate increase request embedded in here and I guess all I'm hoping is that that means there will be a further consideration of it. It doesn't say here that it was referred to somebody, but I assume that means that will be the subject of additional review by the Commissioners and eventually something on the agenda that addresses this. It, just the way it's written here, it sounds both interesting and a matter of concern that they're having trouble attracting court-appointed counsel in that division.
It is. It was a letter sent to us and I think it's worthy of note that Lorain County is dead last in what it pays attorneys to represent the interest to children in the court and current rate for attorneys in the general division. Forty out of court and 50 in court. And they not only sent the letter, but they also sent the rates for all of the other 87 counties.
Well, I hope that does get review and we hear about it later on upwards on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Does anyone else who wishes to address the board? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth, we're on Ex Oberlin. I just have an informational sort of question about number 20 on the agenda, the 10 vehicles that were surplus from Lorain County Transit. Is this because of a cutback in routes or just what was the reasoning behind that?
Mr. Cordez will answer.
We can't take any more parts off the old buses anymore. They're pretty well scrapped out. That wasn't because of a cutback in routes. We've accumulated some backlog of depleted vehicles that we need to remove from the inventory. We were making quite an unsightly mess over at the garage, so we're just housekeeping. They've been stripped of any usable parts to service our ongoing fleet. They're out at the airport right now and we want to dispose them in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code for Scrapping.
Were they replaced or?
Well, there's been an ongoing replacement program. They should, a couple of them should have been scrapped a few years ago. And we're actually cued for additional funding, excuse me, for some additional bus replacements in the near future. But, you know, clearly we're challenged over transit because the replacement of the buses also requires a local match. It's not 100% money. So we're working on a fleet replacement. But I will say that we still have probably the oldest fleet of buses in the state of Ohio. We're struggling, but we're trying.
Well, that's a record to be proud of, I'm sure. I'm hoping that some of the scrapped ones, there's one of the ones I wrote from the airport, maybe a year or two ago, and it rattled and rattled so much that you almost couldn't hear yourself.
Those are the good ones to keep on the road. Those are the good ones to keep on the road.
You know, I've had an opportunity, and let me address that, I'm glad you brought that up, I've had an opportunity to ride the buses, too, and that rattling is from those emergency release windows.
Right.
And it's very disconcerting. The buses are very safe, but it was, it's really disturbing when you're going down the road, and we have worked with them, and if you still notice that going on, please let me know, because I couldn't comfortably ride. Every time it hit a bump, those windows were rattling around, you thought the bus was gonna come apart, even though it was, it was a fairly new bus, too. They had a problem with the seals and the locks on the windows. I think that we've gotten that corrected. We also, our new transit director has been very engaged in routinely, we had to share this with you and the board right now, riding our transit in the evening and on the weekend, making sure that the service requirements are being met, especially in the morning when the buses are going out on the route, that they do their checklist, and the buses are out there and they're clean and they're ready to go, and they're supposed to pre-operate the wheelchair lifts and things like that, so when you get there, they're not trying to figure out, does the wheelchair lift work? When somebody's trying to get on the bus, they're supposed to go to a checklist before they leave the garage. And we found a few deficiencies that we were able to correct. In the past, we didn't have enough staff to do that, so I'm pleased to tell you that she's out there and they know she's out there, so we're getting, I think we're getting a bit of quality service from our provider.
Well, it is an essential service, so anything that can be done to increase and improve it is certainly welcome.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.